Any conversation? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. I think. Okay. The next position is Vice Chairperson. The...I think everybody knows what it is, but if you want me to, I probably should have read what the Chair does. The Vice Chair stands in for the Chairperson. And I think this year, it's gotta be...we've got a lot of stuff on the docket, so I think the Chair and the Vice Chair are gonna be sharing the responsibilities as we did last year. Any nominations for Vice Chair?
We're gonna nominate Mark Jones for Vice Chair.
Mark Jones? Any other nominations? I do have to have a second...do I have a second on Mark?
I'll second that.
You will? A second on Mark? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Does Mark wanna do it?
Did Mark, do you wanna do it? Okay. It's unanimous. Election of the Secretary. Secretary gets to take all the notes and sign some documentation. Do we have any nominations for Secretary? Right now, it's Lynn.
Oh.
It's been Lynn.
Clerk, actually.
No.
So, Secretary.
Nominate Lynn Colletti.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Lynn, you wanna do it?
Lynn, do you wanna do it? She has to do it. Any conversation? All those in favor?
Who was the second?
Kathy was the second.
Kathy was the second. All right. Congratulations, Lynn. Okay. Mark Jones, you're gonna be a busy man. Thank you, Nicole, for everything that you did this past year. And the work and the collaboration. Appreciate that. All right. So, meeting date and time. So, in your packet, there is a proposed meeting calendar. And hopefully, y'all...everyone...
Y'all.
...had a chance to review it. There's one change I'd like to make to this calendar. And that is... The June 1st meeting, if we could make that a May 31st meeting. Is that in this calendar?
Yeah, 'cause you voted June 1st and June 15th.
Yeah, so if we could move the June 1st meeting to May 31st. Does anyone have a...an issue with that?
I do have a conflict.
You do? Does anyone else have a conflict?
June 1st, I think.
To the 31st.
It's not a big deal, but I won't be here either.
Oh, Lynn's gonna be on the hook.
Yeah.
Okay.
The warrants will back in the morning, probably, too.
Yes, they'll have to come back into some warrants.
I'm sorry?
It's fine. The warrants will be later.
Okay.
They won't be ready Tuesday night. The payroll law.
So, we'll just have to come in during the week? Okay, we can do that. Guys, we can do that, right? All right. So, I need a motion to move the June 1st meeting to May 31st. Thank you. Second, Neil, Allet, and Mark? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you all. We're moving too quickly here. I gotta get my...all right. So, citizens' comments? Do we have any citizens? We do, but do you have comments?
Yeah, can we first discuss the calendar? Are we gonna keep it Wednesday nights and...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no, no.
We didn't even vote on the calendar. Thank you. So, this is following the warrant schedule, is that right, Alita?
Correct.
All right. So, is everybody comfortable with keeping the meetings on Wednesday night? Yep? Any conflicts? Nope?
Why have conflicts every Wednesday? I can work around that because I'm not gonna do that.
The driving force for any big change, sir?
Oh, why not? We'll change it for you. What do you want? All right. So, if everybody's okay with the calendar, we need a motion to accept. As amended.
As amended with the first...to the 31st.
Thank you. Second? Nicole?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Mark? Are you with us? Unanimous? Thank you.
So, will the subcommittees be setting their own calendar once they're established?
So...so...yeah, you know, I'd like to ask the school committee to allow me another couple of weeks to look at the subcommittees. If we could keep the subcommittees intact as they are right now until the next meeting, and then at the next meeting...between now and then, let me know which subcommittees you are interested in. If you'd like to stay where you are, I'd be thrilled to have you all staying where you are. And then...
We're gonna have...in addition to Jen, there's another Lancaster upcoming, right?
There is.
Okay. All right. So...
There is. And we've gotta fill the seat for the Finance Subcommittee. Which... Anyone might be interested in when that Subcommittee meets. It's generally 45 minutes?
It's maybe longer.
No, no, no. So, it's usually...
Before the...
Before this meeting.
There's been some discussion about who's gonna be...
I would seriously follow on that. I would be looking to hopefully change that, 'cause that's my big conflict.
Okay. Okay. So, we can talk about that when you guys get in your subcommittees and decide when your meetings are gonna be, right? So...
So, no meeting in July and not until the 3rd?
So, you do have a meeting in July. We have a collective bargaining workshop on July 7th, and Brooke Clancy will be here for that.
But no regular meeting in July?
So far.
So far.
It's scheduled.
Right.
But I gotta tell ya, the...we are kinda getting crunched for time. We've got two meetings left. We've gotta do self-evaluations. We've got a lot of other items to tie up. We've got contracts that are being reviewed. We've got...we've got a lot. So, I'll come to you at the next meeting with proposed items. But we gotta tie up some loose ends with some of the work that we've been doing. But I'll let you know where we're at then. Okay? So, with that...
So, on the committee front, what I'll do is formally move that we continue the current...the previously known membership of committees for one more session of the School Committee, and also continue the existence of the Advisory Committees if we have one.
Task...
It's just the High School Task Force until we reorganize them.
Well, you've also got the Technology Advisory Group. You've got...
Is that an advisory group or an administration?
It's an administration group, I think, that we've been invited to. I don't know exactly if that's...
We made it an advisory at the beginning of the year. Remember that?
All right. So, continuing that as well.
So, any of the advisory positions, just leave 'em as they are.
So, that's...that would be my motion, that they continue with the current memberships, such as the membership that's still here, until we reorganize them the next meeting.
Right. Second?
She's quick.
All those in favor? Mark made the motion.
We motioned that the committees remain the same until...
And the Advisory Group.
And Mark made that motion to move that. It's good I'm sitting next to you.
Right. So, the floating unassigned member could visit various subcommittees.
Well, let's give her a break. She's getting her...she's getting her initiation tonight, so we'll deal with that next meeting. But duly noted, Mark. Thanks. Slave driver. Okay. So, can...did we accept this calendar yet, or would somebody like...
Yeah.
We just did. Okay.
Do we have to make a decision about the collective bargaining workshop or accept the calendar since it's on there?
We voted it last week.
Voted?
We voted workshop last week.
Oh, okay. For July 7th?
Yeah.
Okay. Wow.
Is there a time for that yet?
No. July 7th, there isn't. Dorothy, we'll get back to us. Actually, guys, Dorothy's not gonna be doing the workshop. It's gonna be Glenn Kuchar.
Do you know the nature of the workshop? Is it gonna be just for School Committee?
Yes.
And we can look at different models of collective bargaining?
Yes. They have a series of workshops. This is the first one to kinda give us an overview of what happens, what our role is in the different formats. And then, we'll go from there. Okay. Done with that. Now, any citizens' comments? Nothing? Okay. New business, ninth grade leveling presentation?
Sent an email. She had conflict to social...
Oh, I thought there were two teachers.
Loretta wasn't coming at all.
Oh.
So, Jackie sent me an email. She had to reschedule.
Okay.
It's probably going...she said it's probably going to be in the fall now.
In the fall? Okay. That's fine. We'll take it. Mark Jones, authorization to engage an auditor?
Yes. The School Committee had delegated to the Audit Advisory Committee to jointly work with George to put out an RFP to specific bids for an auditor for this coming year. And it turns out, that process has not been started. It hasn't occurred. And it's desirable that we have an auditor in hand right now, because the fiscal year is ending, and a lot of work needs to be done for the audit. And so, what I would like to suggest, and the Finance Committee recommends, that we that we continue what we have an agreement with the previous auditor, which is Powers and Sullivan, et cetera, for this coming year, for purposes of continuity, and so we can start right...start them in on directing our county office as to the kinds of schedules that they want to do for the audit. And that allows us to be in good order for the coming audit for this fiscal year. So, what I'd like to do is move, basically, that we engage Powers and Sullivan for the audit for this fiscal year, this year 16.
Second? Second, Jen, Lynn, Kathy, you have a question?
Yeah. So, what happened with the RFP? Was it not sent out?
It happens that the Audit Advisory Committee hasn't met since, I think, January, and so the work to collaborate to make an RFP coming to a decision has occurred.
So, because...why didn't it meet? It seems...is there a dereliction of duty? A lack of their word, afraid?
I can't say why. We just haven't communicated. Perhaps the...perhaps the Chair...
Wait, the Chair of that committee?
Right. The Chair of that committee thought the School Committee was going to be nudging them along a little bit, or something like that.
Who's the Chair? Oh, no, I'm not...I guess...let me jump...sorry. So, there was a process in place to put out an RFP so we could look at what...so we...
So, we have opportunity for a number of bids.
That's right.
But there not necessarily was an actual process in place. What we had done, as I recall, and correct me if anyone knows here that different, that we had, when Audit Advisors here, that we had said, you know what? You should probably engage the auditor or put an RFP out there about the next thing. And that's really the extent of the conversation. So, I don't know what was done as far as follow-up pertaining to that or not. So, I don't know if it just kinda withered on the vine just through lack of communication from us to them and so forth.
Who makes up the Audit Advisory Committee?
There is one School Committee member with me at the present, and then there's can be one representative from each town. Lancaster does not have a specific need. And there's a person from Stowe, whose name escapes me. And the other Chair is a person from Bolton.
The Hugopians, I should say.
And the Hugopians from Stowe. Do you have any other call of Bolton, yes? No.
So...
So, there are four members. Three...one from each town and one from the School Committee.
I'm assuming this is a member that's nominated by or appointed by the Board of Selectmen? Is that...
Joined by Finance Committee and Selectmen is what the district agreement says of each town, and then the School Committee appoints their representative.
Or Advisory, or whatever.
So, Mark, I would ask you to take the group by the hand so that we can get it...
I think it's bizarre for us to need during the summer to see if we can get an RFP out and start the process early for the opportunity for...
So, you might wanna get them together so you can get some...'cause once the school year is over, people get plans. Okay.
So, this is for the following year?
So, this is for this fiscal year, fiscal year 16, which is ending in a month and a half. And generally, all organizations are preparing for their audit a couple of months before the end of the year so that they can have a fairly routine and quick audit. And so, we should be in that state right now, but we don't have the direction of an auditor to help move that along. So, this is why I want to suggest that...this is why I moved that we continue the auditor we had previously so that we can march forward on the audit of the timeframe.
So, I have a question on the auditor. Can we direct them to specific areas, or do they just do their blanket cursory review?
We could, through the School Committees, could ask the auditor to have particular attention in some areas in the process of having the engagement letter and the...
Okay.
But there probably is a state requirement for what is included in the audit as well.
Right. I'm saying, you know...
In addition.
In addition. Yeah.
Their practice is municipal, and so they have a number of school districts that they handle, so they're quite familiar with the state standards and so forth.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? So, you need a vote?
Yes.
I would like to start the process to have an engagement agreement with that auditor. Yes.
So...
And it's really the School Committee's hiring, just like hiring a lawyer. It's really the School Committee's area of purview.
So... So, we need to make a motion to continue with the current...
He did make a motion.
To engage them for the current fiscal year.
All right.
At the present, their...the previous contract expired, and we don't have an engaged auditor right now.
Oh, all right. Any other discussion?
It's a one-year contract? Is that what the expectation would be? Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I mean, we're looking to immediately engage the Audit Advisory, right, for an RFP for the following fiscal year?
That would be my open wish.
Yeah.
I'll work on getting somebody from Lancaster.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Sold our list.
Thanks. Okay. All those in favor? How many of your hands are up? Nicole, Mark, Lynn, Neil, Jen, me? So, Kathy, tell us what year.
No. I don't know.
Okay. You want to put share with us?
I think I did. I think I did. I think that is a concern of mine that a district...any district engages a company just by over and over and over again without any evaluation. There was a plan put forward, even if it was just in passing, to put out an RFP, to look at what other options exist. It didn't happen. And that's how I feel.
I...it didn't happen, and I agree with you.
And it's not to put blame anywhere. It's gonna harm you.
No. But we've had the same folks for 10 years. I think we talked about this last year, but the issue is, if we wanna start this process at the appropriate time in order for it to be a healthy one, we don't have time to go to RFPs.
I understand that. So, this is a protest.
Right.
I mean, it carried me. So, I'm just saying, I don't approve of the fact that it...
It could've dropped. Understood.
It fell off the table.
Understood.
It's fair to dump behind you.
Okay. The next item is the Municipal Collective Bargaining Representative to the School Committee. Mark, I think that's yours, too.
Yes. And so, Finance Committee discussed this and recommends that we reach out to the towns to...town administrators, actually. The town administrators are the electing body for the municipal representative to elect a collective bargaining representative, and...
And if my recollection is, there's one across the three towns, right?
Correct. Right. And it's in our interest to do so because we're in a contract year, and we may have strategy sessions for collective bargaining, and it's desirable to bring in a municipal representative to our strategy process if, for example, we create a Subcommittee and if we, as a School Committee, decide we want that representative on the Subcommittee. So, this would be...this basically directs the superintendent to create an election meeting. Apparently, it's in our responsibility to cause a meeting to occur so that they elect a municipal representative among the three town administrators.
I'm not sure. I think the last time, I think the towns take turns.
That's my understanding, too.
It's true. That is what the towns have been doing, but it actually is not what the regulations or the statute says.
Yeah, I remember that, too.
Did you hear that?
I missed it.
Oh. So, it's true that that has been their tradition, but it actually is not what the statute or the state regulations say.
Oh, okay.
And there's a memo from me on today's meeting materials, which basically describes the process and also lists the text from some of the regulations. Say again?
I was under the impression it was part of the district agreement.
No, it's not. So, it turns out, for whatever reason, the School Committee and the towns haven't really understand what the proper process is, and it's pretty much brings the proper process forward so that we have someone on board earlier rather than later. So, I move that we direct the superintendent to discuss with the three town administrators to have an election meeting to elect a municipal representative.
From each town? Then one from all three?
They elect one.
One from all three.
Yeah.
Second? Any questions?
He's already making fun of me.
Neil has questions?
I have no question.
No.
I'm totally on board with Mark.
I mean, do I have to have a whole separate meeting?
Well, it actually...it says in the regulations that it's up to us to actually create the meeting for them to elect a representative. So, the way the regulations were formulated, the district is responsible for causing the representative to come into existence, because for whatever reason, the legislature or maybe the Department of Education thought that maybe these representatives weren't getting put forward for lack of attention. Perhaps districts are the best...
But does that mean that can the committee still hijack tri-town for 15 minutes?
Could we do that?
But if it's the town administrators appointing, you have to make sure all three town administrators are at least two of the three. They need a majority.
So, whatever happens with the regulations, say, the School Committee should cause a meeting to happen among the electing authority. So, that could be the tri-towns...
So, maybe we get that on the next tri-town agenda?
Yeah. I think maybe the superintendent would talk to the administrators and see if they can work out a good opportunity.
Because we want sooner than later, right? But I don't even...when's the next tri-town even scheduled?
I don't know.
Yeah.
You're gonna handle it yours. All right. So, Dr. Bates will handle it. So, this is a motion. This is a directive.
It's a motion to directive. The superintendent to ask for a municipal representative to come into existence.
Wait a second. One at a time.
We already worked that out.
What did you work out?
One at a time.
Okay, guys. We're gonna have a long night. Let's focus. We've got people sitting here. Harder?
Can I repeat the motion?
Please.
Direct the superintendent to discuss with town administrators the election of municipal collective bargaining rep from the School Committee.
Does that work, Mark? And who seconded it?
Jen did.
Jen did. Oh, well, that's what that was about. Okay.
And this is discussion, right? So...
Yes, this is discussion.
Are you...
Lynn, did you have a question?
No, I got it.
Oh, you did. Neil, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do, because we want...ideally, we would like this municipal rep to be at that workshop for a MASBO for the collective bargaining discussion.
Yeah. Not MASBO.
Well, I'm sorry.
The collective...yeah, MAS.
MASBO online mine.
Yeah.
MAS, all of these acronyms.
Good point. Yeah.
Yeah. So, that...that's why we need to initiate.
So, Dr. Bates will handle that.
So, one says tri-town.
Harder?
We don't need to...
So, is that gonna happen to tri-town? We don't need to...
No, that's probably gonna have to be examined.
Okay.
Okay. All righty, then. Any more questions, comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. I'm gonna...if it's okay with you folks, I'd like to get through some of the other items before we get into the MASBO report workshop, because we do have an executive session tonight. Let's jump to the Subcommittee Reports. Finance, Mark?
We met and had discussions surrounding several revolving accounts and enterprise revolving funds, and so we're learning the process of how the enterprise activities, food service, extended day activities are handled financially and how they're operated. And we have continuing questions about understanding rate setting for these things, and also whether they're making money or losing money. And we may have a more thoughtful report coming in the next time or two that we meet some of the revolving fund committee.
Okay. And you'll be sharing that with us?
Yeah. That's pretty much the main topic we've had in the most recent meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Kathy?
The meeting on May 9th was an executive session to discuss negotiation strategies for the superintendent's contract. And then, the meeting on the 16th was an executive session to discuss negotiation strategies for the incoming contracts.
Thank you. Any correspondence in the packet? Nope. Consent agenda, everything looked good on the...did you read the minutes? Are we good on the minutes? Okay. And the warrants of May 20th, minutes of May 11th, they're considered and approved. If it's okay, I'd like to do the items for the next agenda. So, we're gonna go over the new subcommittees and talk about that. Does anybody have anything else?
If we have time for policies, we'd like to bring a few policies.
Bring 'em up. Yeah. We're getting closer. Alita?
You have a policy.
That's good. Anything else?
Yeah, we might have more.
Yeah, so do you think we'll be able to get them realistically?
Realistically, yes, we'll get some, yeah.
They're gonna go back down and then...
Well, we'll see.
Okay.
I mean, there were 15 that they didn't send back to us last time, so maybe they'll love all our work again.
I'd like to also add a request to the committee to prepare and distribute an RFP for legal counsel, so we'll talk about that. Say it again? Kath, I'm sorry.
We may need to discuss FTEs at high school. We, I put it on the agenda for Monday to begin the discussion about looking at some of the FTEs that were approved in the budget and the extent to which they're still necessary and some of this information has...
Yes, 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 absolutely. And we may need to add an executive session for contract negotiation as well.
On the 23rd?
On the June, the May 31st meeting.
Okay.
Let me write that down. Okay.
And I have potential item, I have a bylaw amendment item that's in the policy committee and I would like it to be brought to the school committee before the end of the fiscal year, before the new superintendent arises.
Are you gonna share it with the policy committee?
So it is in the policy committee's hand, but I would like it to come out to the school committee definitely before the end of June, sooner would be better in my view.
So, well, it's actually, it's up to you guys to do what you need to do.
We'll put it on the next agenda, but I would say...
I can't take a word out of this.
All right, and then...
It's about agenda setting and who can charge, chair versus superintendent, and bylaws actually have order upside down.
Okay.
And we did just change the policy.
Okay.
What the heck?
All right, and then we gotta talk, I want you guys to look at your schedules. We need to do a goal-setting session the same way we did in August of last year. I think if we could do it earlier, it'd be better because people crunch their vacation towards the end, so what might be helpful is if Alita, you would agree to gather up dates that don't work for people in August, let's start that way. So if you know you're gonna be away, send Alita, this week I'm gone, not available, to see if we can get a quorum for goal-setting session and have M A S C come and do that with us again, because I, and then we'll get with Brooke.
Mrs. Spence, has the school committee ever done a summer retreat themselves with the superintendent?
Well, that's what we did for a goal-setting, full-day workshop.
You did, just kind of...
Yes, that's what...
What was all the...
We had a retreat like a minute.
No, no, she asked because she's done a retreat with the school committee, so someone just got here off.
So I'll call her.
I'll take them.
Yeah, I'll call her, I need to know her, but yeah, okay. So, one second, guys. I think it sounds like the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a better way.
Yeah, but we're not going away and we're not spending money, so.
Yes.
We did it in the high school last year. Okay.
It's gonna heat outside, so it's gonna be part of a blanket.
Okay, I think that's it.
Question, do we review the district improvement plan at that point in time also? Along with the...
Well, we do have to talk about district improvement plan because we haven't even touched it.
Yeah, Mrs. Spence and I talked about that and we're gonna try to work out sort of like a foundation before I leave and then she can take it and get it done with people during the summer so you'll have a probably staff.
Okay, that's good.
That's great, thank you.
Good question, Neil. Anything else for next meeting? See why we might need another one? Okay, that's the end of that, so let's move into the MASBO report workshop. So let me do a quick setup, we keep using the term MASBO, the report's coming, we're looking at it. So how did we get here? I just wanna go over real quick how we got here, what the processes we're taking tonight, and then where are we gonna go following tonight. So MASBO is Mass Association of School Business Officials and they typically work with districts, school districts, either municipal school districts or regional school districts, and they look at process and financial best practices and they provide an overview. They came in and they did a two-day interview with us prior to that, they worked with George and his staff and gathered up a lot of information and reports, and then they just kinda go through and look at things and make recommendations, commendations, recommendations. So the reason we got to this point is because last year during the budget building and reporting process, we had a lot of our own questions and we had a lot of requests from the community to provide more detail, so in order to respond to that, the first thing we did, and I think Kathy Tier, who isn't with, who isn't on board anymore, she rotated off, kinda took the lead with the finance subcommittee to build a formal process document so that we actually now have on paper the actual process that the school district takes when it builds its budget and looks at all of the folks who touch it, from school committee to administration, to the town administrators and the community, and put that process together so we could see where and when things happen. From that, three members of the school committee went to the Mass Association of School Committee's annual conference and attended a breakout that the school business officials did and that's where they learned about this MASBO report, thought it would be a good idea, and when Dr. Bates came, he and George and I were in a meeting at one point and he suggested it as well. So it really is a natural next step to, how do we make the budget more transparent, how do we understand it, are we structuring it appropriately, are there things we're doing really well, are there things we could do better? So that's how we got to this point, okay? The report has since come back, it's in the meeting packet, we're going to review the report tonight, but I want to share with you the process that I'd like to use and the intent. The intent is not to solve issues, identify problems and finger-point. What we're gonna do is look at what were your takeaways after you read the report? Did it provide value? Where do you think we need to go next? And more importantly, what are your top three priority areas in the report? Because I know that there were several areas that were discussed, so I wanna know from each of you, and we'll put 'em on the board. I'll give you five minutes each, because that's, well, 35 minutes, to identify what your top three areas are. Once we determine collectively what the top three are, we'll discuss them, ask the questions that we need to ask, Lynn's gonna keep notes for us, and then we'll turn that over to Dr. Bates. And at that point, Dr. Bates will take our top three areas and work on responses, help us identify the current business procedures, are we using best practice? If we're not, how are we gonna put those in place and what are they? And allow him to work with his staff to come back to us. But again, we're not looking to solve any issues tonight, we're looking to ask the questions and identify the areas of interest that we wanted to get to some more, okay? Dr. Bates? May I pour you a cup of water?
I will.
Poor man, okay. So, who wants to start? I'm gonna scribe up here and Lynn, you take notes. Who wants to start? So what I want you to do is tell me what was the takeaway of the report, Jen, you're the new girl on the block, why don't you tell us?
I thought it was very useful, I can start with, let me just give you my top three.
Did you think it was useful?
Yes.
Okay, so...
It helped me in my head break down the structures in such a way that I could figure out who's responsible for what, where is it coming in, how's it going out?
Yes.
What are some things we need to do better, what are some things we do well, as you said.
So your top three priority areas?
Well, my first one would be the E-rate regulation requirements, just because...
Yeah.
That whole idea that they could take money away scared of Jesus.
Yeah.
So, and then the budget schedule section, and I would say, coming from the municipal side of this, especially early communication with finance committees and order selectmen, so that, since it's such a huge part of every town's budget, I think that the priority is for them to get an idea of what they're gonna face as soon as they can.
Yeah.
And then updating the job descriptions was my third. I think that if you don't know what people are supposed to be doing, you can't tell whether they're actually accomplishing it.
Okay. All right, that works. All right, who's next?
We're gonna go block one.
Kathy, you wanna go?
Sure. I think that, you know, as I read it through a couple of times and the things that popped up to me as urgent are those things where we could see some deterioration of additional revenues or, yeah, more revenue out of things that are currently chugging along. The report, rightly so identifies the loss of school choice revenues as having a serious impact and there are a couple of items that they identify as having the potential maybe not to put back in everything that's lost, but that has some potential there. And I would look at the, let me make sure I have the right term here. Excuse me. Under the food services category, they talked about the unpaid lunch balances. Now, that might not seem like a big deal, but in other schools I worked in as principal, I was responsible for getting in touch with the people who have money and dealing with that, and I remember in Concord, they, and they went through a couple of management things, but at one point, the outstanding balance in unpaid lunches was $66,000 and nobody was, nobody wanted to do it and somebody has to do it. My, you know, the people in the school that have the relationships with the parent should do it, the principal, whatever, but I would like to see that as a priority item, looking at the unpaid lunch balances, collecting the money, and then looking at a way to deal with the issue of kids charging lunches and that money not being covered by their parents.
Okay, so is that your first or second one, is school choice a...
I didn't prioritize them, no, it's not school choice, it has to do with unpaid lunch.
Yeah, so is that your first priority? You gotta give me three priorities, right?
Yeah, but they're all equal priorities.
Okay, well, you gotta pick.
All right, let me tell you what they got.
So you can tell them, and then you can pick them.
And then the other area has to do with facilities management and rentals. What I, and it makes sense when you read what they have to say about chapter 70 funds, and they mention it a couple of times under facility rentals and facilities management about the money that the chapter 70 funds are supposed to go to, and so we're not charging adequate rent fees that cover the cost, you know, the lights, the students, et cetera, and we're covering those, that essentially is taking some chapter 70 funds and not using them for the intended purpose and they should be going to the students. And that, one reference, and this is on page 38 in the report, where it references how chapter 70 funds are supposed to be used. So they make recommendations about the rental fees and I think that's a priority item in terms of generating.
Okay.
And then, I think the third one would be under technology, there are a number of priority items that they identify. So those are my three.
So what are some of the, because that's a big bucket, one of mine too, but what are some of the areas within technology?
The priority items. So if you look at, on page 43, there are a number of items, priority items, conduct a thorough study of what exists now and if needed, develop a plausible plan to keep the network up to date so that future expanded operational requirements can be met. Jen already mentioned the E-rate regulations, the technology plan, they identified that we do have a technology plan, and they say the extent to which these goals were accomplished in the 1450 school year is unknown because progress towards their achievement was not tracked, and that's something, because I attend the technology meetings with Neil and...
Can I just say one thing, I'm not tenured, but we don't have, 2010 to 2014 is the plan they're referencing.
Yes, I know, but even with the current plan, it's difficult, I have found in talking to folks on the committee, it's difficult for them to identify things that are actual metrics for achieving goals, so that's another priority item.
So tracking the metrics. Got it.
Yep. So those are...
So those are your three, so unpaid lunch balances we need to process, facilities management and rental, and technology specifically around the network and tech plan and tracking and metrics.
Yeah, I think technology would be my number one, just because it's the foundational and the pervasive nature of it.
Okay.
And then I think that the facilities, two, and then collecting the lunch money, three.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. Lynn, you wanna go ahead?
Sure, Sped.
And what about Sped?
There were a lot of recommendations and I don't know, it doesn't say whether that's standard, whether it's good practices or whether there was a recommendation from a, from somebody, so I think that is who looked at. Facilities, tech was really a larger thing, especially...
Same here.
Tech, facilities, because there was nothing for what's existing, we don't have an existing plan.
Tech facilities.
Well, facilities, tech.
Tech plan.
Yeah.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, there's no existing plan of what we have existing.
Oh, so this is...
It's technology, it's right, the network.
Okay. So you've got Sped, technology, and the third one?
The district improvement plan, they couldn't find it.
So give me your, your order. Sped, tech.
I want Sped first, only because it's the kids.
Yeah.
Technology, district improvement.
Okay. Nicole?
Two of mine are already on there, so I'll figure out my priorities in a second, but one of them, I'd kind of like to add to Kathy's unpaid lunch balances.
Yeah.
It seemed like it was a series of policies that needed to be put in place, and unpaid lunch was one of them, but there was, you know, custody of cash and a policy for E and D, there was just, as I said, there's a series of policies that just seem to be missing and unpaid lunch was part of it, so if you, yeah, if you just wanna put missing But I would put E-rate as number one and then technology as two and then those missing policies as three.
Okay. Neil?
So, I would say technology would be my number one recommendation, not so much to piggyback on E-rate, because I know that we have E-rate 2.0, we actually do have a consultant that's been involved now with that to help secure, now whether they're doing what they need to do, I don't know. That being said, they recommended that a consultant come in from the outside and take a look at our infrastructure and give us an assessment as to what we have and where we need to go. I think that's crucial to understanding. Little sideline, Dr. Bates organized a very small technology meeting to get an understanding of what a tech plan could and should be, because currently we don't have, the tech, we have the digital learning side, which I think Cindy's done a great job with that over this year with the meetings and so forth, but we don't have a tech plan which outlines where we need to be, you know, what resources we need in order to implement the digital learning plan successfully in the district. So we've done some site visits on the tech side of things and some of the things that are concerns here, I think are on the radar of individuals, but they are concerns that need to be addressed or that paradigm shift in education is at risk in this district. And if we're truly talking about taking this district to levels that we wanna see, you have to have solid technology now or you're a non-competitor with any other district out there, period.
Okay. So... Tech is your number one?
Tech is the number one and I'm not gonna go into all the nitty-gritty details of MASBO suggestions and so forth.
Well, if tech turns out to be one of the top three, we will.
One of the key aspects of it though, that I will touch base on, is that you've got, currently, the way that it stands is you've got two silos, you've got technology and you've got digital learning, but you don't have a bridge between the two, and that is the role of like a tech director or they're saying like a CIO or whatnot that would share dual roles, and that's critical to get both of those silos working together.
So the connection between tech and digital learning?
Leadership connection, really.
All right. Okay, so that's tech, that's your number one. What else you got?
I would have to go over to food services at this point, and it's coupled with both the MASBO report and the DESI corrective action and so forth. Lunch, unpaid lunch balances, you know, getting, getting some solid visibility into there, which we've made some steps today on, but I think understanding, we haven't really had report outs on a quarterly or any really sort of basis detailed, like a... sort of basis detailed, like a financial report out, and I think that's really critical to understand these enterprise-like accounts. Because then we can come up with ways, Kathy had talked about a couple, for creating efficiencies and policy, which Nicole mentioned, that needs to be put in place, that we don't have in place for unpaid lunches, you know, directives for, and cash, I think is more for the athletic stuff, but we do need a series of policies, yeah, that would be put together to handle that. And I just think better visibility into that altogether and...
Right. Yeah, that's a big area.
And a solid understanding of what's going on, because I know right now, you know, based on some preliminary numbers, we're looking at substantial drops from the year before, over 30% drop. 150, I think it's 180,000 dollar difference from where we were to where we are. Not, but that's, we're still going, we're still positive, but it's trending in a really not-so-good direction, and I think we need to have our eyes on the ball with that, because if this suddenly goes into a deficit at those levels, that could kill the district as long as it's financed as well. Same thing with, the third one that I would have would be the extra after-school.
Extended day.
Extended day, thank you.
And enrichment and extended day, is that what it's called?
Yeah. And again, you know, they're citing specifically, in here, they were citing specifically some accounts that were running negative balances that we really shouldn't have.
Negative balances.
And right now, we're, you know, it's not the end of the year, so there's different reasons, and we're looking into that again on the finance subcommittee. We talked about that today, but right now, we're looking at, it's a loss that we're looking at of about 80, roughly 80,000, a slightly rounded-up dollars, and a differential between last year and this year, now using last year's end of year, it's 130,000 dollar difference that we dropped, again, significant, and we don't have any visibility into that. And so we're hoping to get a little bit more, and I think if we get better visibility on the monitoring side of things, then we can send some flags up to administration that these are concerns and so forth.
So that's a process issue, too?
That, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Mark?
Nicole's missing policies line is, I'd like to catch that, use that as a way to talk about this opportunities to be for clarification on operations, maybe improving operations as well as right policies, where we're actually doing the right thing, but we don't have policies. So I call that one of mine. We'll call that number two for me.
Okay.
The budget process and communicating with towns is a, I think, first for me. And I think their recommendations regarding revolving funds and enterprise funds and the like are also of interest to me, I'll write three. And I'm not sure if that's up there yet. Although food service certainly fits in with it, that is already up there, so...
And same with enrichment.
Yeah, so maybe food services.
Here, you want the food services? But there's more than...
That's true, it's only part of it. It's only one of the enterprise funds for me, so...
How difficult would it be to look at the whole revolving account? As, for you and your team versus just food services? Is that too broad?
I don't think so.
All right. Pardon?
And revolving.
Yeah, I'm asking you.
Yeah, and I would concur with Mark on that, because that's really what's on our radar as a finance subcommittee right now, is the revolving accounts with the enterprise-like accounts in specific at this point. And there are, what, three of the mark at this point that we're talking about?
Three so far.
Yeah.
So Neil, okay. So we good?
No, he's, that's three.
This one's three?
That's three.
All right, thanks. Okay. So, yeah, it's me. I have more than three, but I can only pick three.
What was your policy?
It was. Well, because what we'll do is, once we get through this, we'll come back next week and we'll talk about the next three, and keep moving. School choice. I respect what they said, I'll put my priority list up in a minute. I respect what they said about, you know, we're losing school choice money, and George told us about that as well, but I, and I think that their recommendation came from a finance-only perspective, not necessarily a cultural perspective. So my concern with school choice is, if you're losing kids, you don't offset that by bringing in more kids. That's a dollars-in, dollars-out way to approach it. I want to know why kids are leaving the district, so...
So school choice is out of the district, not in?
So out, yes. School choice out is my concern. That's what's hurting us, right, financially? But broader than just financially, it's what aren't we doing? Are there populations and profiles of programs that we don't have or that need to be beefed up? I've heard a lot of people talk about kids who are at the higher end of the learning curve that need to be challenged more, so is that why they're leaving? And if so, we need to find out. And I think there is a way to do that, we've talked with Dr. Bates about it, and he's got some great suggestions. So that would be one of my big ones. Another one, I will admit, I may be ignorant here, it was just a bullet, I mean, I think the whole accounts payable area makes me uncomfortable with the discussion around purchase orders. And purchase orders are not consistent, it seems through the report, that purchase orders are not consistently created at the beginning of a project, but perhaps they're created after the fact, or if at all. So I want the whole, they have it under accounts payable. And I think the biggest concern I have there is the chapter 30B limit comment. And that, so I want, I want Dr. Bates to look into that and tell us what's really going on. It's on page 23 in the last bullet. "We recommend a system be devised and this financial software package is to prevent multiple purchases to a single vendor reaching a dollar amount exceeding chapter 30B limit of 35,000 and above." That scares me, because that sounds like a procurement issue. So I don't know what's going on there, but I want us to know what's happening with multiple purchases to a single vendor exceeding the chapter 30B limit. And then, my third one is a toss-up between technology and extended day, but I want to say extended day and enrichment, because it just seemed like the accounting in there just was all over the place, and how can you encumber a negative dollar amount? But I'm gonna go with technology, just because technology impacts the kids. So my numbers would be, accounts payable would be number one, technology would be number two, and, oops, yeah, and school choice, understanding what's happening with school choice out would be number three. So I think the next thing we need to do is determine which, clearly, technology, right? Which are the top three here? So clearly, technology, right? That's our collective number one, it looks like.
I think food. So I'll look at number two.
Or E-rate, if you're gonna scale one being more important than a three.
Wouldn't E-rate come under technology?
Yeah, I think E-rate.
Yeah, it's technology. It's technology. So that's why I put technology in parentheses. So that's taken care of. I think food services is the next one, right? So that's our number two. And it's, so now you've got to look at the waiting. Well, that's done.
Three, two, five.
Are there any others that have more than two people on them?
Well, if you add them up, you see, so that you've got a five under...
The lower number would win, though.
Yeah, it's the lower number.
So we already did the ones. Yeah, here it is.
All right, so the top three priorities are technology, that's a big section.
I'd like to say for technology as well, there seems to be a lot of indication that we have technology that we're not using completely.
So the next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna start talking about each one of these areas, and the questions that we have, which Lynn will write down, and she'll share them with Dr. Bates. So it's technology, revolving accounts, including food services, and the budget schedule, and specifically the communications with the town. Nice job, guys. So what we'll do is, we're gonna have some discussion on these right now, and then, next time we meet, we're gonna go talk about the next three, and then we'll keep doing this each meeting until we get through the report.
So you want us to come up with an additional three?
Yeah, well, we kind of have them, unless you want to come up with additional three, that's fine.
Because, yeah, all of, all of the listed things that I would like to talk about did not make it up there, because I had to prioritize.
All right, so, but let's do that. And we'll take these out.
You bet, E-rate.
All right. Technology. What are your specific questions? Remember, we're not solving the problem. If there is an issue that was raised, we're actually asking the questions. Anybody? Need a couple of minutes to look through it?
Well, one of the things that stood out for me was the, and I can't remember the name of the program that's done for payroll.
Incident vision?
Yes, thank you. There was definitely an indication that the, that software system was not utilized to its nth degree, that there were still paper time cards and things that, so basically, it wasn't being utilized to the utmost of the robustness of that software system.
Okay.
We're not, our records aren't electronic either at this point in time. We actually voted not to move forward with that particular program in this past budget cycle.
I thought it was to put the HR records.
Right.
Digitize them, which is different.
Right.
Like all the records.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, you're talking about the paramedic, but...
No, no, like every, like if I, there are records, personnel records, for people who've worked here.
Right, that's what we, that's what we put off.
Right, but this is different.
I'm with you.
Okay. We talking about, yes?
I'm with you, but they were recommending that all, everything go digital.
Oh, okay.
Right, but specifically, I was looking at payroll processes.
Yep.
And I think that would be something that could probably be implemented fairly easily without massive man-hours, whereas, you know, doing, doing HR stuff, people that have been here for 30 years, would require significant...
Okay. Kathy?
As we go through this, and we've identified our priority items, and I imagine that there would be some kind of an action plan that would be put in place.
Yeah, so we'll talk about that, because that...
I'm not gonna go into detail, just in general.
Yep.
That it would be important to know that anything that we see as actionable, we'd want to know what the cost associated with moving on and everything.
Yeah, and we'll get, we'll talk about what that's gonna look like.
Yeah.
One of the things that I noticed on page 43 is it looks like we, it's a priority item, and it's something we've talked about before, and I know that it's not inexpensive, so, but I think we need to understand what it would look like and what the cost is of a technology audit district-wide.
When you say audit, are you talking about to understand the infrastructure? Are you talking about the actual physical, like what's it?
I think this, this is the software side of it, because it's, the priority item is conduct a thorough study of what exists now, and if needed, a plausible plan to keep the network up to date so that future expanded operational requirements can be met. So it's more, and I don't know the words, because I'm not a tech girl, but it's more about can the infrastructure handle what we're about to ask it to do? Right?
We need to know what we want to ask it to do first.
Well, don't we know?
At that level. Like, we know right now the one-to-one, but where do we want to be four or five years from now? Because what you're doing now is going to impact that timeframe, so you need to be forward-thinking.
So that ties into the plan.
That's why you need a consultant who's gonna come in and ask those questions to get that framework and then build...
So how different is that from what I just...
I don't think it's just the infrastructure. You have to also know, you have to know, what are you going to do on the teaching and learning side of everything?
Yes.
In order to know whether or not it can handle the, you know, the capacity that we have.
Okay. That's a big nut to crack. You can't do that in two weeks.
Well, you're not gonna get the full folder, but there are bits and pieces of this that have already begun in place.
That's right.
So you just need to know what's currently being addressed, and then, moving forward, these are the things you need to complete it.
Okay. As long as we have a game plan.
No, there's, there is headway that's definitely being made on that, but you're talking about a consultant coming in, and that's the direction I'm going. But based on the, there's a plan, there's actually a potential model that's being looked at and sort of mirrored, which I think will take us light years ahead from where we are. And then some very creative ways of financing a lot of this, and being able to fast-forward the district where, to a point where we need to be without seeing massive increases in budget. So it's, we're trying to, I know on the technology committee, that's where we're going, and Dr. Bates has really sort of fast-forwarded that in the past few days.
So, but there's two parts to this, and what you're saying is conduct a thorough study of what exists now. Because you really can't move forward unless you know what you have.
Right.
So it's two parts, like you don't want to do anything until this first one says, find out what you have now.
That's the one I was referencing.
So you want to know what it would look like to have an audit done of existing system?
I kind of feel like we need to have a baseline to understand. I don't know, but I'm not a tech person. I don't understand what we have now, so that you can come to me, you know, or us, and you could say, "This is what we're recommending," but if I don't have a baseline understanding of where we are right now, that's not gonna tell me much.
That's part of what they're working on, right?
Okay.
They're trying to establish the baseline of what exists, and then...
And then I just think the organization of the whole technology...
The chief of...
The CIO is kind of, I mean, not that you have to, we have to put a CIO in place, but there's, we need the structure. I think the whole area needs to be, we need to identify a structure, both in the process and the people, and do we have enough people? I mean, maybe we need...
We also need somebody who is ultimately keeping an eye...
Accountable.
Right, accountable.
Because if you just have a general plan, but nobody's making sure that it's being followed, or that, you know, the high school has X, and the Luther Burbank has Y, and, you know, Florence Sawyer has Z, there's, it's all gonna be haphazard.
Yep.
Jen's spot on.
And it's gonna depend on who's interested in the particular facility. And you find, you know, somebody might be fascinated with it at Mary Rollinson, but not at Hale, and so you're gonna have a...
So oversight.
Right. You need somebody who's got the big picture.
So we need a defined vision, which we don't have, and that was one thing that was established. We need a defined vision, and then we need somebody who can become an advocate of that vision, at some sort of administrative capacity, to make sure that that vision's being carried forth, because it's a cart and a horse, and right now, I think we've kind of put the cart before the horse, and we need to get the infrastructure online.
With the initial...
But we need that coordination, to Jen's point, between the two, in order for that to succeed. And that's obviously on the administrative level.
That whole area, we need to really look at. So what we would ask Dr. Bates to do is to work with his team to answer some of the questions that we have, and we, there's a... questions that we have, and we, there's a, you know, let's be honest, we're not going to be able to get all these questions answered because the answer is following a lot of work in some of these, in some respects. So if we don't have the answers, what's the timetable? What, you know, where do we want to be? Where do you want us to get? And give us a timetable on when it could be delivered. Okay? All right. Is there anything else in the technology section? That you folks... I made notes on my cellphone, which was a mistake, but...
They weren't specific on the office part, on the POs and all this other stuff, whether that...
For tech?
Right, and whether any of that actually pertains to the same procurement processes and so forth, because those are higher-ticket items, and if they're bought, you know, a piece, a piece, a piece, a piece, it could exceed...
You know, I...
So I don't know if that's involved, and that needs to be looked at through that process or not.
I got to tell you, that's, you know, the underpinnings of all this is that it's all going to come back to that PO piece, isn't it?
There was also, what was the name?
Almost all these areas.
Over, there was a procurement plan where you pulled it.
The P card?
The P card. So that's something else to consider, that, you know, if you start bundling stuff in with other people, you get economies of scale, but you still do have to make sure that you're not exceeding your, to one particular vendor. But that would also be a way to track it.
The P card? George?
At some point, I'd like to make some comments about the report overall, but just a couple of things, and that would be reasonable, but just a couple of things, I don't know if it would be appropriate for...
Yeah, so what is it that you want to share?
Yeah, a couple of things. There's no binding, well, reason's important, I think, to make some overall comments about the report, is because, though, I think a lot of these subjects certainly have merit to discuss, I think, I don't think that, for reasons which I behalf, they're going to, given the opportunity, I don't think everything that is said should be, in the report, should be seen as the way it's being seen. For example, the comment about the accounts payable on $35,000 is a recommendation, but nowhere in the report does it indicate, nor am I aware, of that being a problem. It's just a boilerplate recommendation. So, and it seems to be at least a...
I don't think they said it was a problem. I think they said there was no way to track it. That was the problem.
Well, there are ways to track it, actually, but in our accounts payable system, there are ways to track it. So I just think that's important in this discussion, this stance, like the technology or whatever. Almost all the technologies, I think you probably saw in the information you got today from Chi, is bought out of the state business, so that doesn't, you know, so that doesn't apply, you know, in that particular instance. You know, so I think that's just an important thing to keep in mind in terms of some of these recommendations. And as I said, you want me to speak a little later to the methodology of the report? I'd be happy to do that.
I don't think so, because I think what we really want to do, and I appreciate that, is I think what we want to do is identify the areas we have questions on, and we'd like Dr. Bates and you guys to kind of dig into it, and I think at that point, if it's relevant, then spit it back. I think that makes more sense in the spirit of what we're trying to do. Neil?
Am I wrong, but this isn't about what's going wrong with best practices that we can actually put in place?
Well, I think we need answers.
Right, there may be questions that they have, and we need administration to take a look at this, verify, maybe there are some things to verify, and then...
So I think the value of this report is our responsibility is oversight, right? Our responsibility is oversight of the budget, of the policies, and all of these pieces feed into the budget and the policies, and if we, if there are questions, and I think this book, this report, has helped me understand the processes much better that I don't necessarily have a vision into. So I think that's really where we're going, is how do we do our jobs better in order to drive the district forward, in order to make sure that the things that we're doing are focused and put in place for the best delivery of education to the students and the people that are teaching them? Yes, no? George, you have a question?
Just one comment.
What's that?
Right, my only point is, I think, I don't disagree with anything you said, okay? But I do think using this report as the basis of that endeavor, I think some of the statements and assumptions and methodology of the report underlying it may be important to discuss because I think there's documentable evidence that there are some serious misstatements in the report that's good to use in discussion, and I don't want to waste people's time in that regard. If you feel like, you know, they're doing it this other way, then we go back, we could, you know, reiterate it at that point, but there are substantial issues with this report that I think at some point may merit some public discussion.
So what, you know, if you would like to send an email to the committee, feel free to do that. I would prefer for tonight, if we could look at the areas that we have questions on, and then turn those over to you guys, and at that point, when you come back to do the report out, share that with us. I think that's probably an appropriate way to handle it. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. All right, does anybody, I saw a hand. Neil?
I, I'm not going to get into the report, the veracity or whatever, because I think this is a tool that's benefiting many districts that are out there, and the aftereffect has been very positive with the districts. The team of people that came in here, professionals, they did a great job. I'm putting my faith in the individuals that, through the conversations, that the people they were talking to were open enough to give the right answers that they have to work with. And then that's it. I know that it comes back, and there's an opportunity, I think, for a review as the process goes for administration and so forth at that point in time. And I guess if there's huge glaring problems, there's that opportunity for the administration to communicate to those individuals and say, hey, this, you got it all wrong, you need to take it back.
So let's revert...
I don't know if that happened or whatever, but the point is, we've got this now here in front of us after that process is passed. I think we need to move forward.
Okay, so is it, the rest of you? Is everybody comfortable with the process that we have, or do you want to do something different?
I'm comfortable with the process. What confuses me is, is who is accountable in the things that we are talking about? Who is, ultimately, the superintendent is accountable, and I get that, but, you know, everything that's listed in here seems to be that it could go under, you know, three different titles, like a sped officer, a budget management officer, and an IT officer.
Yep.
And those people, like Jen and Neil were talking about, would then feed up to the superintendent.
Yep.
So, you know, as far as the processes and our responsibility of oversight, I think, you know, there are things that have been listed here that we would like to hear about, but I don't know right now if there is, right now, someone who could answer to that, or if, like, we can just hand the entire report over to the superintendent and say, you know, can we first talk about technology? Can you get someone in here to talk about this?
That's what we're doing. So I want to make sure, so maybe I'm not being, I'm not making myself, I'm not doing a good job communicating. Clearly, those past two statements were. But I think the point is, these are the areas we don't necessarily understand what's going on, they raise some issues. Are these issues? What's the process? So that we get a better understanding. It doesn't necessarily mean that the solution is going to be delivered in two weeks. It's, Dr. Bates is going to go back, he's going to look at the technology section, he's going to get his group together, and going to go, so what do we think about this? You know, what are we doing? What are the issues it raises? Are these real, are they not? And put a plan together for, you know what, and by the time September comes, we'll have this, this, and this, and we'll know more about this, this, and this, but we've got to be able to get some of the concerns that they're raised here either validated or, you know, closed down because the information that they were given and the interviews that they conducted, either they didn't understand, but I'm not going to throw, I'm not going to throw this report out the window because...
No, no, no.
No, no, I know you're not saying that. I do know you're not saying that, but I think what you're saying is, what's our job?
Well, I'm saying, I think I know our job.
Yep.
And I think right now, we've identified what we first want to hear about.
Right.
And first one is being page 43. You know, that, and that's the first thing that we want to know, there's now a plan that is happening, and I don't think we can hear that tonight.
Right. Right. These are questions, Dr. Bates?
Just what I'm hearing you say, and also, in the report, then, let's say there is some, I'm reading it, there's some misinformation, and that has raised some questions with anyone on the committee. So it's our responsibility to come back and say, you know what, they have it wrong in this report, we have this already in place, or we are already doing that. So in the follow-up, that's what you'll get.
If that, if that's the case.
If that applies.
Is that what you...
And if there is an issue, or something was brought up, and say, all right, so in addressing this, we may suggest moving this way to address that issue.
And I would assume there'd be options, you know, do we need a new staff person?
Right.
Do we need?
Yeah, you don't, this isn't, you don't have to take this, it's not written in stone. These are suggestions. And they say, you know what, at this time, this district doesn't need that. We can deal with it this way.
Or we're choosing to not prioritize it. But we know it's something that Ms. Clutchy's going to want to know about.
Right, it'll be, you know, what we call, you know, put in a parking lot, so it's there, and you may want to address that later.
And this falls in our wheelhouse, either under budgetary or policy, policy issues that have to be brought forward.
Right.
And I think, you know, by grouping things, we're determining for the incoming superintendent what our key items are that represent what we're perceiving as the greatest risks or things that need to be identified for the district and then move forward. And as we go down the list, and we're to be able to talk, I think it creates that communication where hopefully Ms. Clutchy will be able to take it, run with it, and have something to work with and say, you know, verify.
And in our position as oversight, it's nice to kind of have knowledge on how things fall into place.
Exactly.
You know, unless you're in the system, the day-to-day is beyond all of us, so...
Well, it's going to make George's job a lot easier if we don't have to continually ask him to explain the same things every year, over and over and over again, and it will expedite the decision-making process, it will expedite the budget discussions, it will expedite your policies. I just think that there's more value in here than just, is this an accurate statement or an inaccurate statement, and that's valid too. If it is, Dr. Bates, you and your team, you'll let us know, but there's areas here that raise question of processes and things we should really understand.
That's some really erroneous information, and as we may even say, you know what, go back to them and tell them this was wrong.
Yeah, but I don't want to condemn this thing right now. I mean, we're, I don't want to condemn the full report, because even if there is some information that isn't accurately reflecting the process as it currently is, then our district kind of owns some of that, because we were the ones that, not we, the school committee, we had one meeting with them, but they met with people all through the district. They looked at all of our documentation, maybe they need more clarification. I'm not trying to defend the report or the group, but I don't want to throw this report out the window. Okay, so any more questions, comments on technology? No?
Just as long as all of page 43 is included. We did not talk about E-rate, so...
Oh, E-rate, yeah.
So I just want to make sure that that's all included in there.
Yeah, E-rate is definitely in there, because, yeah, we don't want to, and I don't even really want to say much more about that, because I don't want anyone looking into it until we have the answer. Okay.
Helpful to me would actually, to understand the structure of the staff. I admit, I haven't seen an organization...
Some more deal...
Structure of the technology section?
Org chart.
Yeah.
Actually, you know what? Dr. Bates, in each of these areas, if you could give us an org chart so that we understand what the functions are, and you don't have to give us people's names if you don't want to, just give us those function titles, so that that will help us start to build pictures.
And across the district community, or who's in what facility?
Yep. That would be helpful. That's a good one.
That model, that technology model, if it gets fleshed out, actually deals with staffing too, because they have some, they have some very creative ideas with this particular model. So that conversation has just proliferated a little bit on the, yesterday's technology committee. I think it's going in the right direction, but it definitely needs that leadership to bring, it won't get to conclusion without the leadership.
I know, that's what this section seems to scream to me, I mean, for them to, you know, whether it's, like I said before, a CIO or someone else who's kind of overseeing the whole structure that you mentioned earlier, and the tie to the digital learning piece. So, yeah. Okay, I think we, I think we covered this one.
Food services.
Food services and revolving accounts. What's the matter, Neil?
Can I just add one more thing to the technology?
Oh, sure.
Not only do we have the technology plan, but we need a strategy plan too. Do you know what I mean? You can have the technology plan, here's what, here's what our vision, which describes the vision, but we need a strategic plan.
Well, a strategic plan is a district-wide, it's not just technology, right?
Well, for technology to be brought into the district, there needs to be a strategic plan on how this entire thing will fold out to create a solid foundation that digital learning can then be cast on top of.
Okay, good. I just asked him if Ms. Clutchy knew what she was coming into. Great, good. Okay, thank you, Neil. Yep, I think we agree on that, all of us. Food service, it's food service, but it's revolving accounts, so how do you want to take this? You want to do, I know, revolving accounts is less big. That's why I say, I think revolving accounts is a big nut.
I do know that they had started on at least the food services and the...
Let's take food service. Let's just take food service for now.
Well, the unpaid balances, I got the email today.
You got what email?
From the food service director, telling us that we need to be, we need to be up to balance by June 1st.
Yes, and I've seen that email before, but I think that the issues they raise...
The first time since my kids have been in the district that I've got anything saying, as a parent, saying, we can't over, we can't leave the school year with unpaid balances.
So now, just can you give me a question about, they say you owe...
So unpaid balance...
No, no, he did say he would contact people that owe.
Okay.
As we get further on. I'm unfortunately one of the parents that sends the lunch, so...
So why?
It's not a policy.
Lynn, so, did you guys not hear that? There is currently a process for unpaid...
It's not a, it's not a policy.
It's a process. So a policy would be beneficial, I think, to the parents if it was a stated policy, something that people knew.
Yep.
I know people carry a balance for a significant period of time and...
Yep.
Well, there are creative ways of doing this, we touched base on earlier. It's part of this changing power lunch, right, and going to a credit card-based application instead of, instead of recharging this account with a check or cash.
It just debits it.
It debits it constantly, you've got a valid credit card on file, and you have people that aren't going to, or are really just using this.
So what's the, what's the, do you know, you guys already have this conversation? Do you, Neil? Do you know if you already have this conversation, what the unpaid balance typically, George, do you know?
Yes, I do. I know what it is as of today, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
It's an updated number, that's why I have, can we give you one minute? I have.
We're working on getting, we're working on getting the balance carved out.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on.
Oh, okay.
Please.
Based on a morning discussion about unpaid balances, so about that memo that, you know, one school had sent it out before anyone else did, and the food service coordinator has already received 20 phone calls that they're going to be paying.
Perfect. Is that the first time we've done it?
No.
No, okay.
The unpaid balance as of today is $11,695.21 as district-wide.
Most of those accounts talking to the food services director are minor accounts and a few dollars per football.
No, and that, boy, did that add up, huh?
Well, if we think about it, you have three thousand kits.
Twenty.
On average, three dollars...
They get two dollars and fifty cents a piece, or three dollars now.
I forget, what is it now?
So that's one meal, or three thousand kits.
All right. I think we're trying to break that number down. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're trying to break that down because that number is not necessarily defined, but it has to do with the individual student, has to do with a power lunch and the length of time they've been in the school system, but not necessarily, as I understand it, the entire length of power lunch. So we're trying to figure out, because typically when you close out books for a year, you have the balance of the unpaid lunches that would either have to be carried over, but there would be a figure. So I think that's what we're looking at, is going to accounting and kind of figuring out if we can break it down and then figure out what the average unpaid balance is per year. And that helps us be able to project things out, such as that credit card procurement, whether or not any costs associated with it are actually worthwhile. So it helps us realize efficiencies on that.
We provided additional information since this morning, too.
Oh, cool. When I get it, I'll, maybe it's already on there, and I'll take a look at that.
So our education, what is the excess for people who have paid up? You know, they put five hundred dollars in.
Yep, we have that, too. It is...
Because people certainly carry a balance in the summer.
Yes, it's on the top of my head, maybe you guys remember from this morning. It's somewhere in the fifty to sixty thousand dollar range.
Whoa. So what happens to that money? Just sits there?
Carries over.
Oh, 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 no. I thought you meant when people leave. What happens when...
No, I see the amount, I understood the question. That's the amount of money people have prepaid and have not yet spent.
Right.
And I remember at high school, my assumption is they then receive a credit, they receive a check from the district.
Is that, is that how, that's what, that was my next question, yeah.
Well...
Seventy-two plus twelve, or seventy-eight plus twelve?
No, it's just seventy-eight. It's just that number, it was two separate things. Is that what it is? It's in the, it's around sixty, seventy, exactly. So I missed the second question, but I'll have to...
If they have a positive balance...
Much refunded to them?
When they graduate high school?
Yeah.
You get a check?
If you ask for it, yes.
Uh-oh.
Or if you put it on a, you can put it on a student's account or something like that.
So, so what's...
If your child graduates this year, you can put it on your other student's account, and you can refund it.
Oh, you can? Okay. So what happens if I have two hundred dollars sitting in my lunch account and my last kid graduates? Do I have to ask for it?
I don't know the process, but no, I don't believe so. I think you're just refunded.
I think it's part of the...
Check out.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. I have more questions, but what about you folks?
Does it have to go to policy?
What was that?
You do have to ask for it if your kids go somewhere else.
Oh, yeah.
You start choicing them in somewhere else or...
Say it again?
So would that become part of the policy?
Well, we need to develop, as I understand, a policy to handle outstanding lunch accounts, and then there'd be protocol or process that would complement the policy. But it exists, I guess, there's some sort of process, so we're going to reverse engineer this and...
And make a policy.
That's more...
Change your policy.
And I did talk to the food services director, just to follow up on that, on the amount of money overall. And he did state that he believes that the large charge that it will resolve by end of the school year, which is...
Annually?
Yes, I mean annually, right. Because I mean, that's the, that's the one small problem, looking at the number of May eighteenth versus a June thirtieth number, is it may be higher, you know, just because things are still in flux, people haven't paid up, stuff like that. So that's the only hesitation I would have to say. But the point is, it's not going to be zero at the end of the year. Clearly, there's no system collects one hundred percent. But, you know, I think it's probably, should be...
So my assumption is also...
Quite a bit less. It isn't going to be quite a bit less. If it was down to the six thousand dollar range, I think I would be reasonably comfortable with that. It's not perfect, but it's...
But at graduation, it resolves because you can't get your diploma until...
I believe that's been the practice, but I'm not sure that's...
I think that's a policy.
It may be, it may, people may be coerced along those lines, but I don't believe it's legally...
It's legally binding, okay.
But there are other alternatives, and I don't know if it's legal or not, but things like, you know, students not allowed to play on particular sports or actually curricular activities if they have an outstanding policy about certain point. I mean, there are way, so in other words, by introducing things into the conversation, not saying it's pretty, not saying it's pretty.
I'm not saying it's legal.
I don't know if it is or not, but that conversation could be bad because...
I think during the, whatever people bring up during the conversation, you need to investigate whether it's legal or not.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on from there. The, George, I have a question for you. If you know this, the three hundred and thirty-two thousand in the revolving account that they said is currently there, which was probably two months ago now.
Can you just refer?
It's on page thirty-one. So how much is carried forward on average from one fiscal year to the next? There's currently over three hundred and thirty-two thousand in the school food and nutrition revolving account. So I don't understand why that number's so big. That's one. And you may not have that question, but the other question I have is, if we need a large piece of equipment, does it come out of that account, or does it come out of the operating budget?
It comes out of, well, it depends what the equipment is and how large. If it's like a fifty, if it's a ten thousand dollar plus piece of equipment in one of these schools that are owned by the towns, they pay as part of their capital budget. Like Hale's oven broke a year ago, the account's still paid for, just seventeen thousand dollars. If it's a lesser piece of equipment, or at the high school, any equipment, like the renovation of the high school was about seventy thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars a couple of few years ago when we did it, that came from the fund. Never comes to the general fund, generally. As far as the amount of money in the revolving account, when I first came here about ten, eleven years ago, our, we were in the red every year. In about two thousand and eight or so, I believe, we revamped our lunch, lunch program quite a bit. And as far as the structure, we closed the kitchen here, raised the price. We added much more of our à la carte menu, which has now been scaled back because of the fact that the federal nutrition guidelines. So we were in the black, and in the red every year. So we started incident with the black, and we started making a relatively small profit each year from that point on. And we've been in the black now six or seven years in a row. So that's where it's come from. It's built up over that period of time. So in other words, on the, on an annual basis, our margins have been relatively small. We haven't been, you know, rating it in, so to speak, but it's built up over those years, and that's where it is now. So we should look at reducing that in some way. So what could we look at? Well, one, well, as Neil indicated earlier, this year, we're doing it a bit because our participation has dropped dramatically this year. So therefore, it's, you know, for the first year, in six or seven years, we are operating in the red this year. So this year, that will acquire reasonably substantial amount. And that amount will, that will stop bouncing off that. So it certainly won't wipe it out anyway, but it will bounce off it. So that's the first place. So some things, I have not overseen the lunch program for three years or so, so I'm as familiar with it as I used to be. But, you know, eventually, there's different ways we could look at reducing that money. We could buy new equipment, like you say, in the high school or other places, and we could invest in some, some new initiatives that way, and hopefully raise revenue that way, maybe address some of the issues they were having in terms of, so that would be one possibility. The possibility the committee could look at would be for maybe a period of time or something like that, reducing the price for a period of time until we have a sale. You got it down to what would be permissible to keep, and then probably we want to look at a balance in about half the range it's in now.
So, thank you for that. So that concerns me, that large sum of money. And I think the other thing that concerns me is the serve safe certification scares me. That should be a priority issue. On page thirty-five, all staff should be serve safe certified, which scares me because what does that, we need to know how many people are certified. If they're not all certified, what is, how quickly can we get a plan in place? What's the cost? And George, could we use money from this fund, this three hundred and thirty-two thousand, to offset the cost to make sure that everybody is serve safe certified?
Yes, but I, this is one of those issues I think we need to clarify. As to best of my knowledge, and again, I haven't done it for a while, is we are certified. This is, this is one of those best practice recommendations.
Okay, so we want to find out about that.
But I believe we comply.
All right, so we want to find out about that. Okay, that's good. That's fair.
When you say comply, I mean, basically, the rule state that not everybody has to be, but I think what you're saying is, wouldn't it be great if everyone was? Because I think you only need two serve safe people in the kitchen, right?
I'm not sure what the regulations are. I just know we went through a lot together to be certified two years ago, so we can figure that out.
Is it more than what you have now, and we will be...
We could definitely do that.
Yeah, so Dr. Bates will look into that. And then one other piece, and then I'll stop. I really think that the food that we've had in our meetings from food services organization is very, very good. So what I don't understand is, like, I, from a business perspective, I get to say this because it's not, it's not education right now, but from a business perspective, we need to run that like it's its own profit center, right? It should be. But, but clearly, it's not because there's huge balance here, and then there's issues all over the place.
Well, it's not a profitable center, but we run it like a profit center.
So, so maybe we need to infuse it with some more contemporary, I mean, you know, options? I don't know. We really need to look at that.
I think that's very true. I think that is absolutely correct. We do need to do that. But we did that about six, seven years ago. We were pretty successful over a period of time. It's probably time that we do it. And I think you're right.
Yeah.
Because it has, it is, runs a profit center, even if it's not profitable, as Neil says. And luckily, as we've been successful for a number of years, having a bad, down year, and it just come, to some extent, this down year did come on somewhat unpredictable, okay? Because it hasn't really, maybe a little trend last year, but not much. It hasn't been much of a trend, and all of a sudden, the participation numbers have sunk.
Has there been an increase in free lunches, free or reduced lunches?
I just don't know that, so, but I don't think substantial. But it did, but the, irregardless of that...
The number was...
The total number, right, yeah.
Yeah, and even business plan on the food services, that's really what we need. Neil, wait a second. Neil, ahead.
I'm sorry. Go back to serve safe for a second. So my concern with that is we've got some new LTA policy, et cetera.
That's right.
I know that Tom had talked about, I don't know where the status is, and I don't know if they are the people to serve safe, if that includes the LTA training. But to the point, I think, Lynn, if you've got one person that's trained, if that hasn't been passed on to everybody else, then we're putting kids at risk in the district, possibly in alignment of liability.
There's actually an allergy certification that you can get separately from the serve safe, which doesn't...
So that's a nice tie-in to the policy that we just implemented.
Well, right, but, but that's, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, and they were a large part of that policy.
So why wouldn't we want to do that? That's great.
Right. Another aspect of the, the policy issue addresses what you're talking about, and I really think that any of these enterprise-like accounts need to be reported out quarterly in detail so that if there is a year like this, which is everything's kind of hitting a wall at sixty miles an hour.
Yeah.
If that's, if that trend is not reversed, then we're suddenly, we lose everything that we have for any reserves, and now we're back in the red big time if it continues on that trend, you know? And that's not sustainable. So having that on our radar on a quarterly basis, I think, allows us to ask more pertinent questions than that we're asking now about, like, what's kind of being done to reinvent...
Yeah, I would want to know, I think, I think the, the food services director, there's a lot of work there to understand what, I don't want to know what we're doing because clearly what we're doing may not be keeping up with the way that's a population of students and expectations and needs have changed. So what can you do? And I, and I'm not in a rush to spend the three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars unless it fits into a broader plan that is enabler, that helps us to, right?
Negotiate a Starlight franchise.
We're not doing that. Caffeine is a drug. All right.
Say chicken salad in your salad.
The chicken salad, Lynn?
And I just want to make a point for high school. Basically, when Tom came in here to talk, one of the downtrends in why he lost money, he thinks he's lost money, is everyone is using that auditory lobby because they made it more accessible and it's more pleasant. And so that's why he was getting the cart to move the food down to the people that were down, because they weren't in the cafeteria eating, they were down at this nicer little cafeteria style area, but hadn't food.
Well, you know, what's interesting is, there is a, there is a little kitchen area right there.
That's used for...
Kitchen?
It's for the theater, it's right outside the theater.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, there is an area right there, so it could be, I mean, I get the cart thing, but, I mean, I don't even know if you need a cart. You got refrigerator, you got a sink, you got...
But you can leave things down there if it's used by other different organizations.
But they're all used at night. I mean, they're used on weekends or nights.
Well, but even if you had to cart, I don't know.
Tom has a point.
Okay. Well, that's good. Well, let's see it. Okay. So what else? Anything else in the food services area? I think we killed it.
Well, again, because it's off the radar and so forth, procurement, et cetera, you know, how's that all done, handled, et cetera?
For food services?
Purchase orders...
For food service? Yeah.
Food service, so purchase orders, compliance issues with...
So that's a good question. George, do we, do you know, this is informational, okay? Do we, do typically create purchase orders prior to a service being rendered or something being purchased? So that's a regular practice?
Yes. There are occasions when either through people's oversight or happen, it doesn't get traded. I mean, our best practice is, but the, the policy procedure requires people to do it. So no one in the district who's authorized to spend money is supposed to spend money without creating a purchase order first, and having that person who are approved before they can spend money. And many vendors won't take our business without...
Without a purchase order.
So the, the place that becomes a problem is occasionally, somebody will, you know, especially somebody who doesn't spend much money often, will not know or do something that would be reimbursed or something that, you know, might have been better done on the purchase order. Or the other barrier that occasionally that we have to chase the purchase order is in facilities when something happens.
So is there, I, you know, is there a process that catches it for the folks that don't do it that often and they're not realizing?
Oh, yeah, everyone is caught, because the bill can't be paid without, but you cannot get a warrant that you guys see without a purchase order. So, if someone submits a bill, they can't submit a bill really without a purchase order. So, by the time they submit the bill, they have to pay. So, if the, if it's a situation that there's no purchase order, then who accounts, accounts payable person will point that out.
I know on the procurement side, a billion years ago, when, when I was involved in that, we had people that, we have a great relationship with an individual, they've been working with them, vendor, for a number of years or whatnot, and they might pick up the phone because they need this or that, and just put the order through. There's that relationship, the order gets sent, you know, and then you're kind of looking for that on the backside of the patio. It's a simple thing, it's an innocent thing that can happen, and I know that on the procurement side, it was happening here. Who the heck knows on there? But, you know what I mean, there, sometimes it's just that relationship that I think can bring that forward.
There's no question things like that can happen, those are not good practices and those should be fixed, okay?
Yeah, sure.
I totally agree with that, that shouldn't happen. But I think the bigger problem, if we're looking to policy this, and be clear about it, occasionally I will do this, irritate people, but because I have to approve the purchase orders, but is that how, to what extent do we allow blanket purchases?
And so, talk about that.
If somebody buys a service, say you buy a service from, say we buy a service from Canada, okay? Instead of, because we pay them every month. Well, the perfect, no, perfect example, there's even a better example, is first student. We know what we're going to pay them. Should we create the purchase order every month, or should we just create the purchase order for the year and pay the bill against the open blanket purchase order?
Well, that makes sense.
It does. It's, but that's, that's an example where it probably does make sense, where we can open it and then it comes to money and things like that. But there are other areas where it's not quite as, quite that clear, that, you know, something we buy from regularly, people will open, like, a lot, a lot of instructional supplies, they are, or bookboards, they may open a purchase order and then chip away at that purchase order as the year goes on. So, a purchase order's been created, but they're not, so they're spending...
But it's open.
Right, so they're blanket, so maybe Staples is a good example.
Yeah.
If you're buying from Staples, you gotta buy, you know, fifty dollars off supplies this month and sixty dollars next month. They may open, they may figure, that's my five hundred dollars for the year, so they'll open a purchase order for Staples for five hundred dollars for office supplies, they only get the bill fifty, sixty, whatever, they'll hit it against it.
So, that's, but that raises another question I have.
If I'm wrong, though, that, that is easily handled through a P-card process. If you've got a P-card, you no longer have those blanket purchase orders. They contact Staples, they make the thing, give the P-card, it's done, it's logged, it's a separate PO technically when it comes to bill paying, but they've got that credit line that goes on, and that's, that might be part of the rationale for the P-card.
It might be, but I think we'd want to talk about that in greater depth also, because we have some control issues with the idea of P-cards. We've looked at P-cards, and though there are some of the benefits to discuss, we definitely have some control issues concerns about that. That's why we don't have, we only have a couple, we only have a couple district credit cards, too.
So, where are the, that's a good question. Where are the district credit cards?
Superintendent has one, I don't know if Kurt has one, probably not, but he has, generally, the superintendent's had one, I've had one, and Mr. Cleary has one.
No, I meant, thank you, but I meant like, what?
Oh, it's a visa.
Oh, it's a visa, so we have, okay, but do we have, so, I, go back to the blanket purchase orders. So, Staples was a good example, are there, like, what are the other types of?
I don't know, it's on the wall, you can see it sometimes.
I know, I was just going to ask these guys, but you know it better than anyone.
I don't really, I mean, I can't really think of it off the top of my head, and I don't want to, and I don't want to be, because I'm not, I don't do day-to-day accounts payable, so I don't want to...
Oh, okay.
So, I don't want to give incorrect examples incorrectly.
Then there'd be one for something like fertilizer for the fields, or something that's going to be a year-long...
That's actually a very good idea, like Casey made the supplies, that's who we buy our paper towels from, stuff like that.
Right. Anything that you know you need continuously, you put a blanket PO out and...
Right.
It's, it's the other stuff, it's the...
Like a Lowe's, like a Staples, you know?
They probably get things more from them, from the bulk.
But that's where some of them make sense, some of them, I think, all I'm saying is we'd want, I think that's the, the side of it, that to me is a little bit more concerning than, than...
What is?
The blanket side. I mean, that's something we want to look at a little bit more, because I, because, you know, when we want, I mean, it makes sense to allow them in some instances, there's no question it does for the reasons...
A limited one.
Limited, right. But there are other ones that if we really want to spend any time of time monitoring at the central level what we're buying, we might want to be able to have a couple more swings at the pitch, so to speak.
Okay.
So, can we look, add that to it, like, look into the P-card process? Because I know that is, that's a best practice for just a lot of, a lot of...
I think it's worth talking about, but I think it's not as straightforward. I think it's worth talking about. I mean, it's, really, you can do it, I know Kurt has heard that before.
Yeah, I haven't done it either, but we've looked into it a couple times and decided for control reasons not to do it. If the school committee is comfortable with the control aspects of it, because...
I don't know.
No, I don't know, you, I was just saying, no, I don't want to decide tonight, but after we go through the process, we can look at it again, and if the school committee is comfortable with the control aspect of it, we certainly could do it. Because there is some convenience to it, there's no question about it.
All right. Did we exhaust food services? Lynn, Lynn?
Good question. George, did you say that you had a credit card or you have a credit card?
We have three credit cards. So, we, I, is the one we had the Michael not issued anymore? Do we only have two?
No, it's canceled.
It's canceled, okay, so we only have two. We have very low credit lines, but occasionally we need, what about fifteen hundred?
Like I charged, I had to use their credit card for all their hotels when they go down the Cape.
Stuff like that.
Or who gives the miles on these things?
So, I never have any.
That would be illegal. You can't do that.
Oh, now we get less.
Grabbing miles off the back of the...
It just happens because there are some places that...
You only use them, they have to be at someone's knee, and we generally only use them for like online-type purchases. I don't think...
Yeah, there's some places that won't take purchases.
Food service, I don't think I've ever, I don't think I've ever propped it like at a store or something like that. Bill does, but I don't think I...
Hotels don't take purchases.
I've had, I've had to use Michaels, like, if I had to run to Staples, because we needed, you know, something printed right away, or just stuff places that don't take purchase orders. There are a couple places that don't take purchase orders.
Ten years ago, we had a lot of them, and we stopped them for control reasons also. Just to add to that, though, to make everybody comfortable, anything on those also get done with the purchase order.
Right. Okay.
So, a purchase order confirms those purchases.
Right, when you see it on the vendor, first bank, that's the correct word.
That's what it is.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay. Any more? All right, and then the third one, we're on schedule, I just, I just want to make a note of that. Nice job, school committee. The budget, schedule, and communication with the towns.
And there's snacks over there, too, is that what it is?
Well, I think that the administration and the school committee has done a wonderful job this year, but we can do so much more.
Well, I was thinking, and this comes purely from my municipal side of this.
Share.
Share. Well, there was the case of the excess in sped costs.
Yeah.
And it explained why the budget was such the way it was, but to know when, when the school knew that that is coming through would have been helpful. I mean, just not waiting for the school budget, I don't think the school budget process is flawed, it's just the ability to share that information as soon as you get it, if there's going to be unexpected expenditures, you know, is going to help finance committees, Stowe has an advisory committee, advise the town's budget, because it's such, the schools are such a huge part of the town's budget, that any tweak in it is going to substantially impact...
Impact the towns.
And, yeah, everything else that's coming, that's coming down.
And I remember last year, they even, they even gave us more time to get the budget done, but want, to that point, I know that the finance subcommittee, Dr. Bates, are going to be working on a schedule for us this year, right?
We have a proposed schedule, will come for discussion, it might actually, should be added on to the coming school committee meetings.
Agenda item number nine, but we'll put it on. Perfect.
What's the schedule for?
Just the taking, to schedule when a budget or a draft preliminary budget ought to appear for us, and what kinds of time, when hearings should occur, and perhaps when workshops should occur. And we don't necessarily have solid recommendations, but we'd like to talk about it, so that we put one that advances the time period.
And then Lancaster used to have budget hearings on a Saturday, we had that marathon budget nastiness. And then we gave it up, I think we gave it up about five years ago. Does Bolton, Bolton Stowe still do that, or?
Not that I've seen it.
Have to be invited.
Yeah, not that.
The selectmen have an official hearing in which the town administrator describes his budget, and they hear him out for an hour or more or less, and there's, there's a solid document, and that's the preliminary budget, and I think it appears...
That's a select meeting.
That's a selectmen's meeting as opposed to a town-oriented thing.
Yeah, because I think in the last couple of years, the school budget kind of trickled in through Treetown, which isn't always the most well-attended meeting.
Yes.
So, I just, I think that there can be just a more consistent, and I, you know, I don't think anybody's trying to hide anything, I just think that the more people know, the less likely they feel blindsided, the more apt they're able to make their other budget recommendations as they're meeting with their other departments.
And I think that's, you know, one of the things that Dr. Bates shared with us months ago was putting together a schedule and working with the finance subcommittee on it, so that's the good news.
And then there's the second thing forthcoming from the finance committee, that I and Neil were, would like to figure out an opportunity to meet with, you know, with the blessing of the school committee, to meet with the town finance committees, to talk about budget that was just passed, and give everybody an opportunity to quiz us in person in great detail if they wish. And, and for me, it would be an opportunity, perhaps with Fort Clancy being a witness, just to hear about what people think about the budget process altogether, so we can make use of it for the coming budget cycle, and have that, take that, keep that in mind.
So, that came up last time, and I think my comment then is going to be the same comment, and now you guys both are going to help to this. If you're going to meet with the finance, any group from any town, it is only appropriate to include every single school committee member from that town in that meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Right, so, so that's exactly why we would like to bring that up for discussion for the school committee, so that can be figured out and hashed out.
So, I would say, I would say then, when you bring forward your budget schedule proposal, if you're going to do it at the same time, whatever, then I would bring forward a recommendation on how you'd like to see that unfold, what would be the agenda topics that you would discuss, how would you structure it, so that we can all buy into what the idea is.
So, you want a more solid recommendation rather than a discussion? Is that what you want?
Well, I think you need to come forward with a recommendation, because I think what Jen just said is, from a selectmen's perspective, it's kind of loosey-goosey, kind of not really sure what to expect. If we know, if you guys, if we can all get on the same page with what the, what the, what the, what the, help me with the words.
What's the process of, what's...
Right, yeah, what is it that you want?
What is happening, what's coming down the pipeline, what's...
Right, and then you can give that to them before we get in front of them, I think that's going to set expectations, which is what they're looking for, right?
Yeah, not, not bad to give them some information.
Right, so to sort of shape the coming conversation is that we have an object that we actually know about, and everybody's agreed to quite recently.
Yeah, and this is what the agenda is, and this is what we're going to do.
And so therefore, it's a discussable thing, we actually made a decision, and so therefore we can talk about it.
We just have to make sure that if there are going to be more than five of us there, we post it.
Right. I think that sounds great.
It's essentially a postmortem, right?
Exactly, yeah.
And I think that that's, I think that that would be very helpful for understanding the next process, the next budget cycle.
And so, I admit, I, it's, I'm going to start with the Stowe finance committee chair, just to ask him what he would like to know about, so that I can relay that for this conversation, which is soon going to happen here.
And Neil, since you're on finance, you'd be good at pulling all that together.
For what?
The home communication portion of it.
Yeah.
And the presentation.
No, we get this, well, we get this well.
Do you want to be in the finance subcommittee? I'm thinking you might. Okay, so...
Mark, this postmortem, this is of the budget that we just passed.
Correct, yeah.
I thought you were going to do a postmortem on how we did through the year. Was it, so that, you know, here's the budget, this is what we did, this is what we came in highs, this is what we came in low, for the past year, no, we don't do that, so it's just for the one that we just created.
So, what he's doing is a postmortem on the process that we just rolled out.
How we got to that, or how you rolled out to that budget.
Okay, so I misunderstood.
No, you know.
I know.
We're all in it together.
Well, the town's appreciated what was done to this point.
Yes.
But there were some people who made some side comments and so forth, that they'd like to see a little more of this or that, and we'll be able to collect that information, and that will help shape, to some extent, what we're able to do in that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a postmortem.
Yeah.
But I think Lynn's point is, I think, well-taken, and I think by happenstance, our own schedule, the opportunity to know where we stand with our budget for this year, we will all run away as of July first and go on vacation and not really meet very often for two months. So, this is what's happened to the school committee for the last twenty years, and so the, the, the best window is soon after the year closes, and it's kind of hard to have that discussion when, in the fall, we get together and there are ten other things that are also kind of urgent.
Yes, we...
Yeah, I think it's desirable for us to figure out how to have that exact discussion.
Jen, do the select groups meet during the summer at all?
They have in the past, but they, not regularly.
But if we gave them enough time...
Did you want to do everybody at once?
I was only thinking about the finance committees at each town, at least as a starter.
Yeah, see, I think it would be too much to try to do a joint.
Oh, no, 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 what I'm saying, yeah, I agree with individual, because you want people to be able to interact and ask questions, but...
And each town has its own budget constraints and concerns.
Right, and, yeah, and priorities, right? So, that makes sense. What was my question? I don't remember what that was.
Selectmen?
Selectmen.
No, do they, do they meet in the summer? Are they...
You mean the regular, in their own, yes.
Okay, so that's good.
And the FinComs will meet as well, I mean, they, they probably only are...
Maybe that's what we need to do, is get the schedules. But anyway, I'm not going to solve this problem. We're not supposed to be solving problems, it's my fault, we won't solve problems. Okay.
forthcoming, is this, any other questions?
No, yeah, I was just going to ask, do we have anything on the municipal relations, anything else?
I just think the more people know, the easier the process is.
And they gave us a few, a few areas of concern from the town administrators, especially in chapter seventy, and I wonder if, yeah...
Are you ready to talk to their senators?
Right. Okay. Anything else on that section? So, if not, those are the three. Neil?
So, one of the things that I'm hoping that we can bring forward a little bit sooner is the, the capital plan, which we've also talked about in the finance subcommittee.
Yeah.
That happened pretty late in the process, and I think, Mark, if I'm not mistaken, we're hoping that that could be broadened a little bit on that five-year plan, a little more detailed for us at an earlier point. And so, I think FinSub, our perspective, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, is we sort of agree with the findings that some of the administrators has had status of existing capital projects. That's one aspect of what we'd like to see, what the whole report out.
Yeah, yeah, and I think they want to see that, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So, we're sharing that sort of thing, we'd love to see that change.
Yeah, great. Good one, okay. Good, good. All right, so that was the first leg of the Masbo book journey.